Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the meeting in Bella Vista City Council, regular meeting, April 28, 2025. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Council members Wilms.
Here.
Isbell.
Here.
Heinchel.
Here.
Harp.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
And Newport.
Here.
And Flynn.
Thank you. First item is citizen input. Per the rules, there's a three-minute-per-person time limit to address the council on any topic of that person's choosing. The total time allotted for citizen input is 30 minutes. We won't have to worry about that. Any time extension beyond the 30 minutes would require a city council. I will call the people in order. First person is James Miller of 33 Melanie Circle.
Good evening. We were issued a citation for a code violation for a fence that we put up. We were fully, well, we thought we were fully on board with all the codes and everything when we had the fence built. The fence company did make a mistake, didn't get part of the fence that we had put up, that they put up, on the permit, which we can rectify by resubmitting the permit. One of the problems is that Section 109, 248, fence location, or Section B, actually, is the front yard. For the purposes of this subsection, the term "front yard" shall be defined as any portion of a lot forward of the footprint of the primary structure on the lot. In the case of corner lots, the front yard should be delineated by the orientation of the primary pedestrian entry to the structure. So that basically says that your front yard, in the definition of the city code, that your front yard is the area in front of your primary structure on the lot. We own two lots. We have a separate lot with no primary structure that we build a fence on. The fence is, the fence that we built in front of the primary structure of the lot, not the adjoining lot, not the adjacent lots in plural, but to your own ordinance, the lot, is three feet per your ordinance. The fence on the second lot is four feet, and it's not a privacy fence, it's a, you can see through it, it's a rail fence. And I would like to, if I can, I have pictures, if I can give anybody these, pictures of the, this is the front yard.
Yeah.
Can I give anybody these? That's the front yard from the street, that's the front yard from my door, from our door. This is, these are all within code, and they were all submitted on the original permit. That's the gate, and the beginning of the fence, this is the fence in question, which runs down, and then behind, this is from the driveway, the side fence, and then this is from the road, which you can't even see the fence, basically, because there's an entire row of rows of sharon. That had been there for 20 years, they're 12 feet tall, they were there when we moved in. All of that to say that we thought we were doing everything we were supposed to do. We even applied for a variance because we wanted to put four feet in front of the house because we are gardeners, we are Florida Master Gardener certified, and we'd like to get certified here in Arkansas as well, we've been here a year. We even won Garden of the Month for the Bella Vista Garden Club back in August. So we're trying to protect our investment, trying to protect our investment in our property and the community, because just in the year that we've been here, I can assure you that we've definitely raised the property value of our property and the enhanced aesthetics of the entire neighborhood. People go by our yard all the time and congratulate us on what, all the work that we've done, and we've done a lot of work. A lot of hard work has gone into this. No attempt to get around any kind of rules were made, we tried to follow all the rules, the fence company screwed up, but by your own ordinance, I do not have to cut a foot off of my side lot fence, because the city and the ACC want to interpret it in a broader scope than what your actual code says. So you don't get to just, if you wanted to say something in the ordinance, you put it in the ordinance. If you didn't get it in the ordinance and you want to broaden it just on a whim, I'm sorry, but that's, that doesn't fly. And we're, we're going to go to court on July 3rd, we got a citation, we're going to court, and we're going to fight it then, and we like, we, I contacted both of our Ward One representatives, and they, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, if I say they are at least sympathetic to, they've both been to the House, they've both seen all this, and they understand our argument, and I think we have a valid argument. So I'd like to be able to get this resolved before the July 3rd court date, that would be fantastic, and with any of your help, that might be something we can do. So with that, with my time being done.
Yeah, your time is up.
Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next speaker is Agnes Gallo of 33 Melanie Circle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This past weekend, Bella Vista had a citywide garage sale. So on Friday, I followed the sign and I ended up west of 71, in a part of town that I had never been to. I was told I was in one of the oldest neighborhoods of the city. While driving around, I had to wander a few times if the owners were having a garage sale, or if that's how they just store their belongings. Carports packed with all kinds of stuff spilling into the driveway. I was shocked, knowing how the city, the POA, and the ACC proud themselves in keeping Bella Vista a beautiful place to live and each property in harmony with its surroundings. Meanwhile, strangers driving by our house, neighbors walking their dogs, make a point to stop and comment on how beautiful our front yard looks. James and I pride ourselves in making our property a site for everyone to enjoy. We are happy to take part in the beautification of our neighborhood and keeping its value. But here I am, cited to appear in court for code violation because the rule the city wants to enforce does not match the language of the ordinance. We are not trying to get away with anything, the definition stated does not apply to our case. I understand that it is at the city's discretion to pick and choose their fight, but then pushback from residents is to be expected. And from what I gather, it is not a unique situation. Back in November, a couple of council candidates ran on the fact that contractors find that Bella Vista makes it, and I quote, "almost punitive" to deal with them. The double duty of city hall and ACC paperwork with two sets of regulations, sometimes even conflicting, is an added burden. People I talk to who work with or for the city agree that communication with residents and ways of doing business could greatly be improved to avoid conflict. My intention in speaking in front of you tonight is to bring awareness, not to point a finger. My wish is for this council to identify and address a few changes that could benefit everyone in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next person I have down is Wendy Taylor. Wendy, I'll have, also have you listed as a speaker for a report. Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. I do, I do have one more, Paul Brainard of 35 Melanie Circle. I thought you looked familiar, aren't you a big golf star?
Yeah, well, I've been here, down here for 30 years. I just wanted to say that these are good neighbors, they have beautified the property. I'm not sure about, about all ordinances and all that stuff, I'm sure you can find anybody in Bella Vista that's doing something wrong, and I don't know that they're doing anything wrong. Their property is, looks great, makes my house look great, and, I don't know, I, like Agnes said, I said, you see people there with cars parked and grass not cut and stuff, they're making their place look beautiful, and I, I think it's a shame that they're getting called on. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time of the meeting for a council member reply, if anyone would like to speak.
Mayor, if I could say something, not to interpose on, on what the council may want to say, but.
Sure, go ahead.
But it is, when people have been cited into court for a violation, there's nothing the council can do, and it's frankly improper to bring those matters to the wrong forum. There is a forum for this discussion and the debate, and that's in front of the judge, and, and it won't be limited to three minutes, so they'll have a full opportunity and have witnesses and whatever else, so. I just, I kind of, I kind of want to set expectations a little bit, because you don't have any authority to do anything, it's been a citation, it's a citation, it's a matter of violation, it's been filed in court here, and, and that's where it needs to be handled. So I know you all probably feel compelled to always say something, because people have addressed you, and that's a normal thing to do, and I just want people to understand that, that you're probably not in the best position to be able to do that, just given the circumstances, so I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Travis?
Yeah, just thank you for coming tonight and taking time out of your night and addressing the council, but I will adhere to the attorney's advice and remain neutral, but keep us posted.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah. Okay. Next one is. Next one is a financial report, monthly financial report. We have a report for the period ending January 31, so of course, it's just for one month. So you have to take it with a little bit of a grain of salt. So far, city sales tax is up compared to last year 18.8%. County sales tax is up 7.7%, revenues in general are up 7%, and total operating expenses are down 11.6% compared to last year, so, so far is off to a good start. Now, we did send out some financials to council for February, and I believe that Kim Hall, our Director of Finance, followed up with the indication, what was wrong with those financials, the current year is correct. Because of a computer glitch, the last year was totally wrong, and it's because, it's kind of a Y2K thing, it reminded me of the old days, it was because last year had February 29, it was a leap year, and it confused the computer, normally it pulls up last year's results, and it pulled up something that was way different. So anyway, we're going to get that fixed, and we're going to send out the report to council and place it on the website, and the fastest fix, easiest fix, is to send out last year's report also, so you, you would have last year, it just wouldn't be. Anyway, so, but I will mention a couple things about February. So far, the operating revenue does look good, and the operating expenses are $580,000 below budget, so. Anyway, like I say, we seem to be off to an okay start this year. So that's the financial report. Our second report tonight is, you know, we have this concept of having some of the different committees and commissions come speak, and tonight, we're fortunate to have the Active Transportation Advisory Board report by the chairperson Wendy Taylor.
Hi, everyone. So if you guys aren't familiar with me, I'm Wendy Taylor, I'm the Active Transportation Advisory Board Chairman for this year, for 2526. I've been a resident in Bella Vista since 2005, so I've been here a long time. So our board was actually developed in 2023 as a recommendation from the bike and pedestrian master plan for the region, so we actually had our first meeting at the beginning of 2024, and we're going into our second year as a board. So just to give you a little bit of introduction to our board, you know, we're basically to advocate for bike and trail use and pedestrian use for the facilities here in Bella Vista, and we also advise on grants and other funding opportunities for the city, and so a variety of activities aimed at advocating for and enhancing the city's trail, bicycle, and pedestrian infrastructure. We also assist and facilitate local events, so you'll see us at Pedaling for Pancakes this weekend in the Gear Garden, and you'll also see us at the POA events for newcomers. And we also advocate for continued expansion improvement of the trails and active transportation facilities with the adopted comprehensive plan. So basically, what was adopted by the city, we are advocating for those to be consistent with the adopted plan. We also advertise, excuse me, advise city staff regarding policies relevant to trails and bike use here in Bella Vista. Over the course of the past year, we have assisted with grant applications, we've provided guidance on multiple local and regional initiatives, we've developed a list of strategic goals, such as promotion and behaviors that favor active transportation, increase community engagement, and prioritize transportation-oriented services and extensive education promotion of our network here in Bella Vista. So we've also established a few subcommittees to develop social media campaigns for the city, to plan events, and to research other funding opportunities for trails. For 2025, we have a couple of scheduled activities, we're going to do some walk, we're calling them walk audits, where we're going to ask the city to come out and walk with us in certain areas of the city, so we can understand where the pain points are from an active transportation perspective. We're going to be at the POA events, we've been at two so far, we'll be at the rest of those for the rest of this, the year, and we're also tabling in events such as Pedaling for Pancakes this weekend, so, but that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. I have noticed that the Active Transportation Board is very popular, whenever there's openings, there's a lot of applications, so.
Yes, yes.
It seems like you have some folks on there with really good backgrounds and experience.
We have a very good board this year, we have a very diverse group of us, we also have two students that are with us, so, and that's a great opportunity for the students to be involved as well, so, and you'll see us at those events.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Wendy?
For the event on Saturday, is that cash only, or is it just the personal?
I'm not sure, that would be a Pedal It Forward conversation. I know you can buy tickets through Eventbrite ahead of time, so I think that they're having them do that, so I would imagine onsite's probably going to be, actually, probably not cash only, they'll probably do it through Venmo if I had to take a guess.
Perfect.
That's how Pedal It Forward normally does their stuff, so.
Awesome, thank you.
So what was the time and date on that?
That's this weekend, they're going from 8:00 to 10:30.
Okay.
Saturday, Sunday, Saturday and Sunday?
It's Saturday.
Just Saturday.
Yeah, so Pedal It Forward is doing Pedaling for Pancakes, it's a fundraising event for Pedal It Forward, which is a nonprofit organization here in Bella Vista, Bentonville, that works to provide bikes to those that don't have bikes. So they're going to be at the Gear Garden, there's volunteers that are going to be flipping pancakes, so that they're going to be doing that, and I believe that they're doing donations, I'm not sure that I can speak for Kenny as far as Pedal It Forward, but I know that they have tickets available on Eventbrite, but it goes from 8:00 to 10:30, and then we'll just be there with a table, talking about the Active Transportation Board law there.
Thank you, appreciate it very much. The next report is the Monarch Butterfly Day Proclamation. I'll read this. Proclamation, the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas 20 years ago, more than 1 billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but populations of this iconic species have declined by 90% in the last two decades. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and whereas Bella Vista, Arkansas, has taken the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge to demonstrate the city's commitment to creating a habitat and educating citizens about how they can make a difference at home. And whereas every resident of Bella Vista can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And now therefore, I, John D. Flynn, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Bella Vista, to hereby proclaim April 11 as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the city of Bella Vista, Arkansas. I officially recommit today to continue to take meaningful action to protect the monarch and to leave this legacy to the leaders following after me. I encourage all residents, city staff, and visitors to participate in taking steps to increase the planting of milkweed and nectar plants to preserve and strengthen the monarch butterfly population, dated the third day of April 2025, John D. Flynn, Mayor. So it's great being a monarch butterfly city, and it's one of the several environmental things that the city's involved in, so, very exciting. Okay, next thing is the consent agenda, and it has several items on it, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Wendy and Anna. Roll call vote.
Council members Wilms.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Heinchel.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Newport.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is new business, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Apex Central, Inc., in the amount of $101.25 per ton for asphalt, street resurfacing, hot mix overlay, and further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers, Inc., in the amount of $2.88 per square yard for slurry, street resurfacing. Karen Hunt, do you want to come up and explain a little bit?
Hi, so this is in regards to our annual street resurfacing program. We put out a request for bids, I was publicly advertised for two different methods of resurfacing, one being the hot mixed asphalt, and one being a slurry seal application. Of those, we've received four bids. Three vendors submitted bids for the hot mix, Apex Central, Inc., was the low bidder with the unit price of the 101.25 per ton, and Vance Brothers was our only bid on the slurry seal application, the amount of $2.88 per square yard. This has kind of been the typical history of street up, street resurfacing in Bella Vista. We are recommending that the city council award the bid to Apex Central for the hot mix and to award a contract to Vance Brothers, Inc., for the slurry seal application in amounts not to exceed the city council-approved budget. Yes, sir?
Larry?
Do you recall how the prices compared with last year, were they increased a great deal, or were they the same?
Last year, our hot mix, the low bidder was at $111.92 per ton.
So it went down.
So that's a difference of $10.67 per ton. And then on our slurry seal for 2024, it was bid at $2.75 per square yard, and this year, it's at $2.88 per square yard.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Larry?
Second.
That was Larry, Wilms, and Wendy. Hughes? Roll call vote.
Council members Wilms.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Heinchel.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Newport.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2025 city budget to reappropriate unspent donation revenue to various departments from 2024, and we have a list in your packet, the total amount is 388, 386,170, and they have a breakdown of the various departments, and how much it was applicable to each one, so you could study those over. So we're, this is all donations from citizens, so we're very grateful for the support we get from citizens. Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Second.
That was Larry and Travis. A roll call vote.
Council members Wilms.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Heinchel.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Newport.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Bella Vista and the city of Grabot regarding cross, cost sharing of improvements to High Wasi Road. Karen, could you explain this a little bit?
So the agreement we're proposing is for the city of Bella Vista to work in cooperation with the city of Grabot for improvements on High Wasi Road. Those improvements would include a resurfacing, a restriping, and new stop bars. We're working with them to make this a single project, because it, first, it lessens the amount of time it takes for both entities to go ahead and do that work, it's less of an impact on our residents and the people who commute using High Wasi Road, which is a pretty popular pass-through. We are, the city of Bella Vista would oversee the contract, and then Grabot would pay their portion. On High Wasi Road in your bid packet, or, excuse me, your city council packet, there is a map of the different segments of High Wasi Road, there is a portion that is only Grabot, there is a portion that is only Bella Vista, and there's also a section that's 50/50, and so there is a draft cost share agreement in here, along with a scope that explains the linear distance for each of those segments, and what the expectations on cost would be using this year's current low bid.
Any questions? Larry?
Was this a part of the project that was bid? How do we, how do we include this work under our city umbrella bid that we did?
So the funds for resurfacing the Bella Vista portion of High Wasi Road is earmarked in our spreadsheet for our resurfacing contract. The portion for Grabot, we will do this scope here, and we will invoice them for that, so they would pay Bella Vista directly for their portion.
So we actually included it with our, our street?
Our portion, yes, it is earmarked within our resurfacing budget for this year.
Okay, thank you. Do we need, all right.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Travis and Anna Isbell. Roll call vote.
Council members Wilms.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Heinchel.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Newport.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next one is a resolution amending the 2025 city budget to authorize one additional part-time position in information technology within. position in information technology within existing funding. And I wonder if John Mokel from IT could come up? Well, he's making his way up. This wasn't on the work session last week, and we realized that we needed to have this approved, because the student's gonna start in May before the next meeting takes place. And so, that's the reason we kinda had to put it in here without giving you a forewarning. But John, if you could explain about it?
Sure. Yeah. So, it's an opportunity to bring back a summer intern that we had last year. We had a college student from John Brown University, a young man named Noah Olson, did a great job for us last year, and he has the opportunity to come back again this year, and I thought we could certainly take advantage of it. We have a lot of projects lined up, we think, that he would be great at, and in terms of funding, I, I have a miscellaneous labor fund, in case I need to hire a contractor every year. So, he would be, basically, some of that money would be moved around to cover the expenses of a, a summer intern.
Yeah, we needed to put it before council, because technically, it's a head count. So, even though it's still within its budget, you know, it wasn't, the head count wasn't. So, that's why we brought it before you today. Any questions?
Sounds like a good way to get help.
We think so.
And provide good training.
Yeah.
You've got one year of experience already. Can't beat it.
Yeah.
Well, one of the reasons John was so enthused is the young man did such a good job last year, and it's, you know, a pretty attractive price compared to an outside consultant. So, we felt like it was a good situation. Is there a motion to approve?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
That was Larry Wilms and Travis. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wilms.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Harp.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Newport.
Yes.
A motion carried, six to zero. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'll go over the announcements. Next city council work session is 5:30 PM on Monday, May 19, at Bella Vista Police Training Room. Next city council regular meeting is 6:00 PM Tuesday, May 27, at Bella Vista District Court. That's on a Tuesday, because Monday is Memorial Day. Planning Commission work session is 4:30 PM Thursday, May 1, at Bella Vista District Court. Planning Commission regular meeting is 4:30 PM or immediately following the Board of Zoning Adjustment, Monday, May 12, at Bella Vista District Court. And Board of Construction Appeals is 3:00 PM Tuesday, May 13, if necessary, at Fire Station Number 4, Conference Room 1639 Forest Hills Boulevard. So, seeing nothing else, we can go ahead and adjourn. Thank you so much.